I'm not sure if the interpreter's on the wrong channel or our AV is on the wrong channel, but we're hearing the Spanish channel.
Right, Tony. This is Vincent. How should I change my channel? Normally, I go right into the Spanish channel.
You're supposed to be on the Spanish channel. I think we're supposed to be on the English.
Right. But I've never had to change channels before, so...
Right. I'm talking in the mic, so the AV guys hear me.
Oh, okay. Okay. Thank you.
He's not assigned.
Okay.
Okay. Hold on. I think we need to assign you. Just give us a minute.
Okay. We're going to take a minute to reassign channels, and then we'll be right back. So enjoy this commercial interruption.
So vamos a tomar un pequeño break, un pequeño descanso, para hacer unos arreglos técnicos.
Okay, Vincent, can you try that again? Okay, we're not hearing him, so I think we're good.
Hopefully, someone is. All right. Good morning. We'll call the meeting to order for the morning of December 6, 2022. Tony, could you please call roll?
Jimenez.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Present.
Davis.
Here.
Sparza.
Here.
Arenas. Foley. Mahan.
Here.
Jones.
Present.
Liccardo.
Foley here.
Thank you.
Just to give everyone a sense of how we're going to proceed, we'll have our invocation ceremonial items at 1:30, and so we'll go right into work. But first, let's start with the Pledge of Allegiance. If you're able to join us, please rise.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We'll start with the Consent Calendar. Now, wait a minute. We should go to Orders of the Day first, shouldn't we?
Orders of the Day are after Ceremonials.
Yeah.
Oh, I see. Okay. Because Vice Mayor Jones and I just talked about potential move of an item, but I guess we'll wait until that item comes up before there's any move on the schedule?
That is correct.
Okay. We'll try it that way. My apologies to anybody who's waiting around. We'll start with the Consent Calendar. We'd like to pull Item 2.10, the Fall Intergovernmental Relations Report. Are there other items to be pulled from Consent? And I'm still pulling up Zoom, so I'm going to ask for help from Tony or Grace if they can see.
There's no panelists with their hands up, and also you have Joy helping us today as well.
Oh, great. Thank you, Joy. Okay, so I have no hands on any Consent items. I have a note to pull, Item 2.10. That's actually not my request, unless it's any of my colleagues. If not, I'll simply withdraw that. No. Okay, I just have a note here. So let's simply move forward with the entire Consent Calendar. We'll go to Public Comment.
Gigi Gutierrez.
Can't you hear me?
Loud and clear.
I'm just kind of curious, on a group of Democrats, how you were all able to pledge allegiance to the Republic.
Is this a comment about items on the Consent Calendar?
No, this is a generalized question for every single meeting.
This is for comments on the Consent Calendar. We're going to move on to the next person.
Mayor Beekman.
Hi, Mayor Beekman. To try to finish this item, I may not get through my public comment here. To speak to the yearly state and federal funding items of law enforcement on today's Consent Calendar, all major various cities of this time have been asking in the public meeting space if armed robots and heavily militarized law enforcement tools can be practical and allowed for their local cities and communities. To offer some history, in the past few years, the federal government has helped facilitate a massive increase in law enforcement surveillance technology for local bay area governments. And if you've noticed, local California governments and law enforcement agencies have had a somewhat difficult time in explaining and being more fully open and honest and accountable about these new current projects. The federal government level is also currently much contributing to another world at war and possibly nuclear war. And when obvious solutions of peace and dialogue, the Ukraine region have been presentable to all sides for years now and in how to more openly consider an East and West Ukraine. All of this is a sad indication of this country can easily slip back into an era of 9/11 using the practices of war, secrecy, opacity, and how to make decisions for our local community. And from this, this can speak to the mayor's questions from last Thursday's Smart City Committee and what can be the future relationship between privacy and law enforcement issues. I'll speak at open forum on the rest if I don't finish. As law enforcement as technology can usually take a first priority in our current local communities, we should be at a time that the future of tech, open public policies, and accountability questions can help begin for all of the community to more exactly and realistically ask how important is the need of technology. And from this, to ask more responsible questions, like if there's already ample surveillance tech and data collection in a neighborhood area, how much is then enough? Minimum use and deployment ideals should become more clear as a shared positive...
Back to Council.
Thank you. I just realized, I better take myself. There we go. I'm muted on Zoom. Okay, great. I just realized why it is I wanted to pull Item 2.10. There's a memorandum from several colleagues and myself in addition to accepting the report to urge Congress to pass the Respect for Marriage Act. And so that would essentially place that, I believe, on our legislative advocacy agenda. So I would ask if the maker of the motion would consider including that memorandum.
I'd like to make a motion to approve the Consent Calendar and adding that memorandum.
Second.
Second.
Okay. I'm going to go back to the public to see with regard to that particular item, if there are any comments with regard to the Respect for Marriage Act or IGR report.
If there are no hands raised from the public, Councilmember Sparza has her hand raised.
Okay. Councilmember Sparza.
Thank you. Obviously, I'll be supporting the motion, and I wanted to actually comment on 2.9 and 2.10. I wanted to thank our IGR team for a really impressive report on the legislative program. And then regarding the memo, thank them for including the bill on Page 8 and 9 of the report. And obviously, I'll be supporting the memo. And I had a question for our IGR team. Is that Dosee Zane walking up, or who do I... So I had a question for our IGR team on the hate crimes. Are we coordinating with the county? The Hate Crimes Task Force has done a tremendous amount of work. We've aligned that work with the city's budget, but there's still more work coming and more recommendations coming. So I wanted to ask that our work on hate crimes legislatively and our advocacy coordinate with the county. And so I think that's a question for Lee and Zane, because I know I'm not sure who's taking the lead on the budget aspect of it.
Thank you very much for your question. Zane Barnes, Intergovernmental Relations. I can tell you that we have been coordinating with the county through our bi-weekly IGR calls on hate crime legislation at the state and federal level in terms of the budget piece.
Yeah, Councilmember Sparza, Lee Wilcox, Assistant City Manager. We have a meeting, I believe, on Thursday with county representatives to talk about the budget piece, as well as some other coordination around some of the public safety partners. And this is on the agenda for that meeting.
Okay, great. Thank you very much, and great job on the report. That's it for me. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. I think Councilmember Foley would also like to comment on the IGR report and specifically on...
Just quickly, I want to... Oh, was it me you said? Oh, Foley.
Foley, yes. All right, your hand was also up. So happy to go in either order. Okay, Councilmember Foley, why don't you start, and then we'll go to Councilmember Cohen.
I just wanted to indicate how important the Defense of Marriage Act proposal was and that we continue allowing those of same-sex marriage to obtain and continue to be married as we go forward in a country that is questioning that right now. So I appreciate any efforts we can do to ensure that that occurs. I also understand that this is moving in a bipartisan way, which is really fabulous, that our country sees how important it is that we have same-sex marriages allowed and legal through every state in this country. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you for the comments, Councilmember Foley. I'm just going to make a point about the upcoming year for IGR. The CBRT initiative is going to be qualifying for the ballot the next month or two. And obviously, I know it's on our list of priorities, but I just figured I could highlight how important it is that we, as a city and as collectively across the state, put a lot of resources into fighting this measure, which would be really, really bad for public jurisdictions, whether they're cities or districts or other things.
Yeah, thank you for your comment, Councilmember. We're already starting the initial process of coordinating that with the local California cities, and we're continuing to advocate on that. We will get the official numbers back in January to see if it does qualify, which we know it probably will. And then we'll begin to figure out our larger advocacy strategy.
All right. Any other questions? I thank you, Zane, for your responses, and thank you for all the great work of the IGR team. We know there's a lot in the year ahead. All right, let's vote on the Consent Calendar.
Jimenez. Jimenez.
Yes.
Parales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Thank you. All right, we're going to go on to Item 8.3, which is Amendment Title 20, the San Jose Munich Code for Parking and Transportation Demand Management. And that is heard concurrently with 8.4, which is Amendment to City Council Policy 5.1, Transportation Analysis for Affordable Housing Projects.
Mayor, I'd like to make a request to move Item 8.3 and Item 8.4 to be heard during the evening.
Okay. I would support that. I've heard from two committee organizations that would like to be able to have public comment, and it's difficult for them to have their members offer a comment at this time of the day. Is there any objection to hearing that? I guess it would be first thing at 6:00 PM, as soon as we're done with our...
That is correct.
Okay. Are there any objections? Councilmember Davis?
Hi, Mayor. We did notice this as being heard, to be heard, right after Consent. So I would respectfully disagree to move it. And also, I'd just like to point out, I have a memo on this, and I probably am not going to make it too much past lunchtime today. So I would hope that my colleagues would be willing to hear it earlier.
Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you. I agree with Councilmember Davis. We did notice this, and we just voted on the orders of the day. Also, we have the siding policy with the time certain at 6:00 PM. So we would push that item, which has been consistently noticed. You know, folks are expecting to have that heard at 6:00 PM. And so I think we're sending out some conflicting messages here, and those folks would end up waiting till, you know, possibly late. I mean, it's kind of... I mean, it's kind of hard to predict our schedule at this point. But I'm concerned about item 8.2 and the impacts on 8.2, which is time certain at 6:00 p.m.
Okay, I want to clarify for the record. First of all, we have not had orders of the day. I specifically asked if we should have orders of the day so we could consider this very request from Vice Mayor Jones, which I think is a reasonable one in light of the fact there was a significant amount of community interest in this item. And I can't imagine hearing an item of significant community interest that involves development at 11:00 a.m. when we've got community interest in being able to testify both through neighborhoods and from environmental organizations at a time when the public's able to participate. I'd also note that the 6.9, I'm not finished yet. The 6:00 p.m. item, the 8.2, was not set for time certain. It says not to be heard before. So we can certainly hear both. There's only one item set at 6:00 p.m. It's not hard to be able to hear both of those items at 6:00 p.m. And that would be consistent with our practice on all items involving, have implications for development. They're typically heard in the evenings.
I missed the comment about the order of the day. My comments stand. I'm still concerned about the impact on item 8.2.
Okay, Councilmember Peralos.
Yeah, thank you. I'm just mostly concerned because we did agendize it, and so we may have some speakers. I think we can remedy that. I don't know if we'll be able to remedy Councilmember Davis, because I know she's just extremely under the weather, COVID here. But maybe we could remedy this by allowing, if there are public commenters that are here because we noticed it at 11:00, allow them to speak on the item, and then we can take action this evening. I'd be fine with that if you'd be comfortable with it.
Yeah, I'd certainly support that approach. I think the idea is to be able to have, Vice Mayor?
Yeah, I'm very supportive of that as well.
Okay. Why don't we hear public comment on these items now? And then we could entertain a motion? Would that be appropriate?
Or we can just continue the item?
Yeah, I need guidance from Nora about what this requires. Can we simply hear public comment and then continue, or do we need a motion?
Yes, you can do that.
Okay.
And then, Mayor, obviously, you know, noting the public commenters so that that way they're not repeat this evening.
Yes, absolutely. We'll note who's spoken, and so everyone will get only one bite at the apple. Okay. Councilmember Mahan?
Yeah, just wanted to clarify that. So there will be two opportunities for public comment on the item. One now for those who were hoping to speak now, one this evening when it comes back up. I also just wanted to clarify, in terms of any impact on 8.2, we could certainly choose to hear 8.2 at 6:00 and then hear this immediately after.
Certainly.
Is that correct? So there doesn't need to be any impact on 8.2.
I don't think so, no.
Okay, great. Then I'm supportive.
Okay. Okay. Any other, Councilmember Foley?
Hate to pile on or get involved in the middle of this, but we do have our staff here. I'm wondering if we could go to the staff presentation right now, then have public comment, and then postpone action on, postpone any action on the item until after 6:00.
Let me check in with staff, because I know a whole bunch of them are going to be here for the housing siding policy, I'm guessing, as well. I'll check in with Jennifer, however you guys want to.
I think staff will have to be here for questions.
Either way, yeah, they'll have to be, okay. Yeah, we'll have discussion either way, so.
Okay, that's fine.
So we're sorry if we're ruining any Christmas shopping plans right now.
Thanks.
And Mayor, this is Sergio. I have my hand raised, but I'm.
Yes, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, I guess I have no issue doing what we're interested in doing, but I recognize that Councilmember Davis has been really engaged on this topic and has a memo. And so as part of this public comment, I'd love, especially if she's not going to be here for the evening meeting, I'd love to hear her perspective on the item. I'm not sure how we approach that, but, you know, if she can sort of share her concerns, because I know a lot of the work has happened in TNE.
Sure. Why don't we do this? Once we hear public comment from those who are here or on Zoom and like to comment now, if Councilmember Davis indicates she's unable to be with us in the evening, then we'll hear from Councilmember Davis, and then we'll continue. Is that appropriate?
That sounds fair to me, yes.
Okay, great. Council, I'm having a hard time tracking all the hands, so I've got Councilmember Sparza, then Carales, then Davis.
Yes, I had a clarification, so I think this has been a really helpful discussion. Appreciate everybody's ideas to figure out a path. So just for clarification, what will happen right now is we'll hear the presentation, the 15-minute presentation. We will then hear public comment today, right now, comments from Councilmember Davis, and then continue the item until this evening. Is that correct?
No. No, we're going to hear public comment. If Councilmember Davis cannot be with us this evening, we'll hear from Councilmember Davis. The staff is going to present the item with the rest of the item this evening.
Is staff here now to present the item, or they have to be here either way?
Yes, but they have to be here this evening. Jennifer indicated they have to be here this evening anyway, because they're going to have to be here for discussion and to answer questions. So it won't be a time savings effort for them.
Okay, that's it for me. Thanks.
Okay. Councilmember Peralos? Is that from before? Okay, I'm not hearing from you. You might be on mute.
So, sorry, sorry, Mayor. No, my Bluetooth cut out. Apologies. Yeah, I mean, at this point, it's getting a little convoluted, but through the conversation, I was kind of thinking along the lines of Councilmember Sparza that maybe we just hear the presentation, get whoever's here for public comment, have them do public comment, allow Councilmember Davis to speak, and then we continue. It's almost the same, right? It just gives people an opportunity. I know what Vice Mayor was looking for was, let's give people an opportunity to actually come in the evening to speak on this item. We can get as far as possible and still do that by allowing the presentation to happen now as it was scheduled. You know, whoever's here to want to comment can comment. So anyway, I'm comfortable with that direction. I don't necessarily think we need to keep beating this bush, though. So I'm fine either way, but I do think that would be reasonable as well.
Okay. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I want to just appreciate my colleagues for trying to accommodate me. I don't want, I don't want to speak before everyone from the public has been able to speak, so I will endeavor to rally and come back at 6:00 o'clock after this item is heard or after lunch. Thank you.
Okay. I'm sorry, Councilmember Davis, I didn't hear it completely. Did you just say you will likely be here with us this evening?
Yeah, I'll come back this evening.
Okay, understood. Okay, so let's go to public comment for those who are here who would like to speak this morning. And you'll only get one bite at the apple if you speak this morning. Before we go to public comment, Councilmember Cohen.
Just one clarifying question, I'm sorry. So we're hearing public comment now, but the idea was not just to hear public comment now, but we're splitting public comment and hearing it both times, right?
That's correct. Yeah, the whole point was to enable the public to be able to weigh in.
Yeah, thank you.
Do we need to vote on Vice Mayor's motion?
I asked Nora a moment ago on the record whether we need to. She said it was fine for us simply to defer, but I'll allow Nora to.
You're going to take the matter up as it's noticed after consent, but you're going to split your hearing, and you can do that. So just to accommodate some of the timing issues.
Okay. Do we need a motion to do that, or can I simply do that as a chair?
You can do that.
Okay, all right. I'll do that then as the chair to save us some time. Let's go.
Thank you.
Thank you. Let's go to the public now.
Ali Saperman.
Hi, my name's Ali Saperman. I'm here on behalf of the Housing Action Coalition and as a San Jose resident in strong support of updating the TDM code. As we know, our carbon footprint won't have, reduction won't happen unless we change land use patterns and prioritize, that prioritize cars as the primary mode of transportation, providing TDM measures is necessary for projects going forward, and future projects should support reducing VMT by limiting their single-use occupancy vehicle trips, strongly support a TDM plan that replaces arbitrary and excessive parking mandates. Changes to TDM will reduce and, or reduce VMT, and as a result, reduce less traffic congestion, air pollution, global warming alongside. We definitely need to be taking, prioritizing every tool in the tool belt to take our housing crisis seriously. We're raising money to fund more affordable housing, but cities and developers are running into challenges with these antiquated parking requirements. That means we are getting less housing and even less affordable housing. A study in 2020 found that in affordable housing, one parking space per unit increases cost by 12.5% and two spaces increase cost by 25%. One in 10 households that rent their units do not own cars, and that's over 12,000 households in San Jose that pay for parking that they don't use. Just really want to thank the council, the commission, and the staff for all of your work in this to ensure positive and sustainable climate and housing outcomes for our communities. Thank you again. Please support the staff recommendation.
Let me remind for members of the public who may be confused, and I can't blame anyone for being confused through all this, that we're taking, and thank you, Ali, your comment was on the proper item, so I don't want to mislead anyone, but the two items that we're hearing together for public comment this morning are 8.3 and 8.4. 8.3 are amendments to the Parking and Transportation Demand Management Policy Ordinance, and 8.4 is the council policy transportation analysis for affordable housing projects. We'll hear any public comment now, and for those who haven't spoken this morning, we'll hear public comment when this is called after 6:00 o'clock. So I want to make sure everyone's aware of what we're doing. You can certainly comment at either time, but you can't comment both times. It's not Chicago voting rules. All right. Okay, I think, I see no hands. Okay, so I think that means folks are otherwise waiting until 6:00 o'clock, or they're simply not here yet. So that's fine. We're going to defer these items now until the evening, and we'll go to item 3.1, the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
Okay. Thank you, Jennifer. Item 3.3 is a statement of policy and questions for the prospective director of finance. There's no presentation. I don't see any hands. Is there a motion?
Motion to approve.
Second.
Okay. Let's vote on Vice Mayor's motion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Carales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Item 3.4 is the COVID-19 Recovery Task Force Status Report. We do have a presentation. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Mayor. City Council Rosalynn Huey, Deputy City Manager. I'm joined this morning by my colleagues on the COVID-19 Recovery Team at the City Manager's Office. We have Rob Lloyd, Deputy City Manager, Carlos Velazquez, Assistant to the City Manager, and Aurelia Bailey, also Assistant to the City Manager. We're really excited to be with you this morning, to share the results of the year-long process of the COVID-19 Recovery Task Force. Just as a quick reminder, the city council first approved the COVID-19 Recovery Enterprise Priority as part of the city roadmap back in March of 2021. And then September of 2021, the city council actually established the 55-member task force with the goal of really, the task force to work with our residents in the San Jose community to consider the future on how to stabilize both our families, our workers, and our small businesses. So in terms of setting out its work for the task force, the group over the year, over the last year, has met 12 times virtually. Our meetings were open to the public. We had live interpretation in both Spanish and Vietnamese. And to undertake its work, the task force decided to establish nine different committees by various topics, as you'll see on this slide. And this is really where the meat of the work happened at the committee level. Another large part of the task force's scope was to develop a community engagement plan. I'm going to turn it over now to Carlos to walk you through that aspect.
Readings, Mayor, Council. Turn your button. Shown here are the goals that were part of the community engagement plan the task force created and implemented this summer. The outreach that we conducted was an important part of the task force process as it provided the community input needed to inform the task force's recommendation in the report. We're happy to share that we were able to engage with 1,500 people through 31 activities this summer, thanks in large part to the nine members of our lived experience group, who helped organize activities like pop-up, tabling at events, virtual and in-person forums, focus groups, pop-ins to existing community meetings, and a community resource fair that 500 people attended. I'm sorry, this is the... In addition, the community survey the task force developed was completed by more than 700 people, 38% who completed it in Spanish or Vietnamese. Here you can see some of the key issues heard from the community affirming much of what we know. Outreach and awareness is one key issue we wanted to highlight. Three out of five survey respondents indicated that their biggest challenge in accessing the city's recovery resources was that they just didn't know about them or who to contact. This is just a summary of the findings, and the full report shared with the task force helped inform their final recommendations.
Thank you, Carlos. Good morning, Mayor, council members, and members of the public. My name is Aurelia Bailey, and I'm also an assistant to the city manager from the city manager's office, part of the recovery team. Earlier today, earlier in our presentation, Rosalynn mentioned the task force established nine committees. So throughout this process, to help them organize, a template was developed to formulate goals, strategies, and actions. The committees met on identifying key needs, impacts related to each issues, reviewing relevant reports. They heard from city staff from various departments about existing city initiatives and programs. And after the results from our summer community engagement process that Carlos had just mentioned, committees incorporated community feedback into their recommendations. So we ended up with 88 recommendations. 10 of these recommendations the task force assigned, the 2 million set aside by city councils. The recommendations actually align with our existing recovery initiatives, housing stabilization, food necessities, health and wellness, childcare, youth, families, workers, and small businesses. The recommendations are organized into three categories. As you can see, nearly half of the recommendations are underway as part of the city's work plan. We have some actions that will require city council policy direction, and then recommendations that will require additional evaluation and resources. So what's next? Next steps. So next steps is our first focus will be on the 10 recommendations that have been allocated funding. We will coordinate with the various departments, create work plans to get those going, and finalize the impact metrics. We will be providing updates to the Community and Economic Development Committee. We are already scheduled in the draft work plan to provide updates in May of next year. Lastly, we are going to continue the Promotoras pilot program to outreach and educate our community on our recovery initiatives.
Good afternoon, Council. To the credit of all, the process worked well. All the task force members at the last meeting expressed what a special experience it was. Community leaders worked together with focus and high mutual support. Here you see the partner organizations whose assigned leads served on the task force, and they exhibited exceptional collaboration, and the city cannot be more grateful for the dedication and contribution of these over 60 people. Sorry, slipped by that one. And then for the special expression of gratitude and appreciation for the lived experience group, this work was supported by a grant from the Silicon Valley Community Foundation as well. And these nine community leaders with direct lived experience from the pandemic assisted the task force and the staff conduct deep engagement in neighborhood, sorry, with neighborhood and community groups through focus groups, workshops, and events. neighborhood and community groups through focus groups, workshops, and events. And with that, we're here to answer any questions and take any feedback.
Thank you. Thank you, Rosalynn, and Carlos, and Aurelia, and Rob, and everybody who worked on this task force effort. I know that these community-led efforts required enormous amount of staff time and investment in order to do it well, and I really appreciate the work that's been done, and particularly some of the really good ideas that we piloted, for example, the Promotoras, which I hope will continue to persist for many years. Let's go to the public, and then we'll come back to the council.
Kathy Cordova.
Good morning, Mayor Licardo and council members. My name is Kathy Cordova, and I am the Executive Director of Recovery Cafe San Jose and a member of the Nonprofit Racial Equity Action Leadership Coalition. First, I would like to offer thanks to the council and staff for establishing the Recovery Task Force as a place for the nonprofit community-based organizations as well as businesses and residents to develop strategies to help stabilize the communities that were most harmed by the pandemic, much like the communities I serve. It is critical to gain the input of people with lived experience related to the pandemic, and we appreciate your willingness to be inclusive of these voices. We appreciate the city's responsiveness to the real coalition's request to conduct a very open community process using its resources. I'm a member of the Real's Budget Justice Work Group, which is supportive of the current recommendations and allocations. We specifically agree with the task force finding that $2 million for these important approaches is not sufficient. We agree with the task force and staff that the city council should use the unfunded recommendations as a template for upcoming budget decisions at mid-year and in decisions about fiscal year 2024. Thank you very much to the staff involved in this process and to you, the council, for your consideration of our request. Thank you.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. I don't think, I heard a lot of words, but that's all I heard, just a bunch of words strung along into a sentence, but had no real meaning. You didn't convey nothing to me, absolutely nothing, but that's because I'm not in the know. I see, I don't belong to a nonprofit. You know, I don't belong to people that are actually profiting from poverty, which is these nonprofits. None of these nonprofits are going to challenge this city. My community suffered the most deaths, period, period. And that is because we were servicing white communities, and we were taking, because we were exposing ourselves to the grocery stores, because we were exposing ourselves to the food service industry, because we were exposing ourselves to all of these threats, we were taking death back to the families, and we were killing our elders. And what this city did is they propped them up and said, oh, you're, 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 I don't know, you call them something, some worker. You're an essential worker. Yeah, an essential worker, while they were taking death back to their elders and killing them. And this city thinks that it doesn't need, that it doesn't have to quantify what that actually looks like. You think you're just going to come here, throw some money at these nonprofits, especially almost Mayfair and Sisi Puente Collective, and shut them up? Okay? Maybe they'll shut up because they're getting paid by this city, but I'm not going to shut up because I am not compromised by money. I don't do this for money. I do this for justice, and this city owes me justice. Ever since Sisi Puente, you owe me, and this city's going to pay. It's going to pay big time, and I'm going to get that reparation, believe me.
Louis Hourhan.
Thank you, and hello, Mayor and council members. Louise Hourhan from Working Partnerships. I served on the Recovery Task Force for the past 12 months, and I want to thank and commend the city staff who worked on it for all their support and also for their flexibility and willingness to learn from the community and make changes as they went. When the task force begun, its mission and its mandate did not include supporting workers in San Jose. The task force voted to add that, and it was added and became, as we saw in the survey, one of the biggest issues affecting people. The task force, when it started, did not have subcommittees, working groups, any way for task force members to develop their own recommendations. The task force saw a need for that, created those subcommittees, and staff were very generous and supportive in helping make those happen and move them along. So I think this is a very rich process, and I would really urge you to look at the entire set of recommendations that came out from the task force. This 2 million, as Kathy Cordova mentioned, is really a drop in the bucket. I hope that this entire report can be a guide for the next few years for the city, both in its budget process and in policy setting, in the city roadmap, in looking at what are the priority policies that the city is going to pursue the next few years. This can be a way to ensure that that's guided by the needs of the communities, the needs of small businesses, and needs of workers, as they've been articulated in this year-long process. So thank you very much for the opportunity, and this is not the end of the process. I hope this is just the beginning.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks a lot for the words of public comment today and of the previous speaker. I will definitely want to look into this report and this reporting, what it can work towards for our future. I offered public comment tonight, or last night, that I was kind of, I'm kind of embarrassed about having to continuously offer the concepts of, are we going to have an earthquake in the year of 2023? I feel I have to do that in the name of a certain openness to understand the issue and clarity for ourselves to consider it, but it's embarrassing to have to ask that question. I'm sorry for its trouble. I'm trying to learn how to do it in decent terms, and I think the point I learned from last night was that, you know, maybe it's the overall questions of how to consider natural disaster preparedness practices as a, as a way to consider more direct questions if there's going to be an earthquake. And I feel this sort of committee, this task force and its work with the COVID issues can very well address, you know, the future of natural disaster issues for San Jose. And I know, I know the mayor and city government has worked really well to create a good set of natural disaster preparedness plans and practices that I hope this COVID-19 task force has taken to heart and has been a part of this, what can be good learning steps for our future as natural disaster preparedness will be important for our future. I think that's a better overall view of how to ask my initial young man's questions. So, so thank you for these efforts. I'll definitely want to read it, and good luck how we work as a community on issues, and thanks for your time.
Back to the council.
Thank you. Let's go to questions from council. Councilmember Prowls.
Yeah, thank you very much, Mayor, and thank you to the staff and for the briefing that you provided, and most importantly, to the task force members for all of your engagement and your work and investment in this process over the last year. When we initiated this, the concept stemmed from the success that we saw in the COVID Recovery Task Force on the greater downtown area that my office helped to convene, and I saw benefit and really heard that benefit from the participants of that task force and thought that there could be a real expanded benefit if we looked at something citywide, especially considering the opportunity that we have coming out of this pandemic. And, and I think it was well worth it, number one, reflective on where we have invested over the last couple of years in responding to the needs of the pandemic, and so it was good to hear that a lot of these things are what our community was wanting and what they continue to want. The one, I think, piece that was surprising and unfortunate, but I'm glad that we've heard it and we're hopefully going to try to amend it, is the, the awareness portion. I know there's the community engagement resources that were allocated, for instance, to like the Resource Fair, the Annual Resource Fair based on COVID recovery, and then just general awareness, like through the Promotoras program. But I do believe that, you know, we do a lot to try and create awareness, all the way to the extent of door-to-door of trying to reach out to community members with the services that the city has available. But even still, through this process, we've heard from the community that that's one of the barriers, which is that our community didn't know what we had to offer, and it is daunting when you're dealing with every issue that comes about pre-pandemic, family life, work, multiple jobs potentially, you already don't have an extreme opportunity to engage with your local government and the resources they may have. But then you add a pandemic on top of that, and people are just trying to survive. And so it's really incumbent on us to get this type of information directly in front of them. And so I'm looking forward to the, those two opportunities, which, and I really like the one of the Resource Fair, the Annual Resource Fair, and be able to spread that out to different communities, coming out to our community, let them know that there's going to be continued support for them, and beyond the pandemic, as we know that the city offers support to our community. So I think that's an ongoing need that we will have and continue to want to look at. Overall, I do believe that the 2 million, as was stated, is a drop in the bucket, and we know that on council here. We had a heated discussion last night on how far, you know, a couple million or a dozen million can, can go, and I know that this task force would be extremely pleased to see the council allocate, even say double the resources in each of these categories as we come into the budget cycle next year, but more importantly, to look down the rest of the 88 list, or list of 88 recommendations, and seeing what the council can, can fund and move forward next year. I do think this is a great roadmap. I would agree that this is a start. We've now got a, we have the roadmap, and now the council has a bit of a start because we seeded that with the $2 million, but I think we can now make some further investments and look back to this work to determine where those investments should be made. So I encourage my colleagues that are remaining on the council to take this report, look at this as you vet out the budget, and city staff as well, as I know you will, as you make some of those decisions next year. But, but thank you again to everybody involved, and I know will be through my office, helping to provide a combination and recommendation, or, excuse me, recognition for all the task force members next week during our final council meeting. And with that, I'll move approval. Thank you.
Second.
Thank you. Councilmember Esparza.
Thank you. I also wanted to take a moment and thank all the folks for their work on this task force, and this work has been really strategic, and it shows how critical this work is needed as people continue to be hit hard economically, socially, in health, as we're seeing as coming into the winter, these continue to be issues. And I wanted to echo Councilmember Prowls's comments on, you know, this city council, this city council in the middle of COVID made some really big decisions about projects and some big decisions and budget decisions around childcare, early care, and out-of-school programs. And so it's great to see that, that that really aligns with the community. And I wanted to highlight the need for continued economic security that is mentioned in this report, rents for low-income folks. So rents remain flat at higher rents, but at lower income, rents, rents are climbing. They are climbing, and that remains a big issue. Minimum wage issues continue to be a huge issue moving forward, and addressing that economic security is important, and also wanted to thank the task force for really including small businesses, the mom, mom and pops, particularly in aging sort of corridors. A lot of those businesses have been hit really hard in the last few years, and so this task force has done really great work, and I also wanted to echo the comments about, I hope that the council in June aligns this work with the budget that the council will approve in June, because this is, I see this as sort of a strategic plan for, that should align with the city's bigger budget, and these items are going to need bigger investment. That's it for me. Thanks.
Thank you. All right, I see no other hands. Then let's vote on the motion.
Jimenez. Morales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo. Thank you.
Thank you. All right, I'm told under the Rules Committee direction, thanks, everybody, that we're going to keep going ahead until 12:30, and then we'll take a break and come back at 1:30. Given, I think, all of our mutual efforts to try to plow ahead, if we cut that hour break into a half hour, I certainly won't object. I'll be happy to hear from my colleagues as to their views, but in the meantime, I'm going to keep going to 12:30. If anybody wants to suggest we go to 1, I'll happily oblige.
Well, let's go to 12:30 and take a half-hour lunch.
I think we can't start early. That's the one constraint we have, right?
Oh, okay. Then you want to go till 1? Is that what you're suggesting?
I mean, I guess we could. We just, we'd be going into ceremonias at 1:30, I think. Yeah.
Okay, let me put it this way. I'm fine with shortening lunch and moving forward until you call a break for lunch. How about that?
Okay. Is everyone okay with the 1 o'clock break?
I'm fine with that. Just don't do what I did, having an extra-long lunch. Don't, don't make that mistake.
Oh, is that right? Okay. I missed, I missed that opportunity. I'm a man who appreciates lunch breaks like no one. Okay, we'll keep plowing ahead till 1 PM. In the meantime, we've got a team heading down. Welcome, Julia and team. Talk about item 3.5, which is our annual comprehensive financial report for fiscal year that just ended on June 30th. We're going to hear this item concurrently with item 3.6 and item 9.1, but we are going to vote on these separately. So let me call those items now. That is item 3.6, which is the external auditors' report, which is a report to those charged with governance, that's us, and then item 9.1, which is the, will be convening the successor agency, the redevelopment agency, the city of San Jose, and we're going to hear the audit of financial statements for the successor agency. Okay, that's a lot to do. Julia, take it away.
Yes, so we were starting with the presentation of 3, 5, 9, 1, and 9, 6 altogether, even though you'll act on them separately. I'm Julia Cooper. I'm the city's Director of Finance. With me, I have Rick Bruno, who's the Deputy Director in Accounting, and David Bullock, who's the Partner at Macias, Jeannie, and O'Connell, are auditors. So let's see, I'm trying to say if it's good morning or good afternoon. It's almost between the two. So, so the annual audit was conducted this year by Macias, Jeannie, and O'Connell, and as I said, we've got three of us making the presentation. The, in the virtual audience, we have members of the city's finance accounting team, and I want to acknowledge and thank the accounting team for their extraordinary effort in producing the various financial statements and audit coordination. And we will also take questions at the end of the joint presentation. So in terms of the presentation outline, we'll first talk about the annual comprehensive report, then the successor agency report, and then finally, the report that those are charged with governance. As part of that last item, David Bullock will share the independent auditor's report and the accounting standards that were implemented during the fiscal year, and I will provide the management response and conclude the presentation. I do want to note that the fiscal year 20, the 21, 22 audit is the first time in 12 years that the city has received a report to those charged with governance with no new findings and fully corrected the prior year findings. So that is an extraordinary effort, and since this is the last time I will be presenting this document to the council, one that I'm very proud of and very proud of the accounting team. So, thank you very much. So, so, and we'll go in more detail, but I wanted to start with the good, the very good news. So on the next slide, the So, on the next slide, the audit includes a number of engagements. There are 22 separate audits or engagements with MGO. So in addition to the big document that we all gave you a hard copy of last week, they also do standalone audits for the component units, which include the airport, the successor agency, and clean energy. They also audit the convention center and cultural facility funds and the bond funds. And this year, we're also happy to report that we completed the final closeout of the audit of the 2002 Measure O Neighborhood Security Bond Project. So all those bond proceeds have been spent and accounted for, and the final audit was So on the, on the next slide, which doesn't... Oh, I know. Okay. So we also had audits on the library parcel tax, the investment program compliance, South Bay Water Recycling, Viva and deferred, deferred comp plans. The single audit is still in production, and an informational memo along with a summary of any findings will be provided to council once it's complete. It has a March 31st, 2023 federal deadline. We also partnered with MGO this year to support the city in a multi-year engagement to implement GASB 87, which is regarding leases, and will soon kick off an implementation for GASB 96, which is based on subscription-based IT arrangement. It's a significant multi-year effort that involves nearly every city department, and the leases in effect this year's ACFOR and the subscription-based IT arrangements will be effective in next year's ACFOR, which is fiscal year 23. This engagement with MGO does not include the two cities' retirement systems. Those financial reviews are overseen by the city retirement system and performed by Grant Thornton, and they post their audits on their website. So now I'll turn it over to Rick for an overview.
Thank you, Julia. The annual comprehensive financial report is the city's set of audited financial statements that comply with the accounting requirements established by the Governmental Accounting Standards Board, or GASB. It must be audited by an independent auditor using generally accepted government auditing standards, and this year's ACFOR is 344 pages and organized into the following major sections. The introductory section orients and guides the reader through the report and includes the letter of transmittal, certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting, the distinguished budget preparation award, the listing of elected officials, and the city's organizational structure by function. The fiscal year 2021 ACFOR earned the GFOA's certificate of achievement for excellence in financial reporting for the 34th consecutive year. The financial section presents the independent auditor's opinion, management's discussion and analysis, the basic financial statements, and the notes to the basic financial statements. And the required supplemental information includes supplemental schedules to the financial statements and to the notes. The supplemental information includes an accounting of all non-major funds, internal service funds, and trust and custodial funds. And finally, the statistical section includes data on key financial metrics, economic and demographic statistics for a 10-year period. Now on to the audited financial statements. The government-wide financial statements includes the primary government of the city and other separate component units for which the city is financially accountable. Both statements are presented using the economic resources measurement focus and the accrual basis of accounting. This means that revenues are recorded when earned and expenses are recorded at the time liabilities are incurred. There are two statements within the government-wide, the statement of net position and the statement of activities. The statement of net position is similar to the balance sheet of a commercial business and represents information on all assets, deferred outflows of resources, liabilities, and deferred inflows of resources. The difference between total assets and deferred outflows of resources and total liabilities and deferred inflows of resources is the city's net position. Over time, increases or decreases in net position may serve as a useful indicator of whether the city's financial position is improving or declining. And the statement of activities is similar to the income statement of a commercial business and presents information showing how the net position changed during the fiscal year. Net position will increase if revenues exceed expenses and decrease if expenses exceed revenues. Finally, the fund financial statements report information about groupings of related accounts used to maintain control over resources segregated for specific activities or objectives. Each city fund falls into one of three categories, and that is the governmental, proprietary, or fiduciary funds. So in the next two slides, I'll, I'll cover an overview of the two government-wide financial statements. And so for the net, statement of net position, which is located on page 27 of the ACFOR, the overall city's assets and liabilities remain largely stable for the, from the prior fiscal year with improvements to the net position. The total net position increased by 270 million with the following notable changes. Assets and deferred outflows, which is represented by the blue and yellow shaded area above the line, increased by 122 million from 11.799 billion to 11.921 billion. And the primary reasons for those is due to the increase in cash and investments resulting from the receipt of American Rescue Plan Act funds and higher property-related tax receipts. The liabilities and deferred inflows, which is represented by the shaded areas below the line, decreased by 148 million from 8.08 billion to 7.941 billion, primarily due to the decrease in recognized pension and OPEB liabilities, short-term accounts payable and unearned revenue. So the total net position ended fiscal year at 3.98 billion. The statement of activities is located on page 28 of the ACFOR. Overall, the city's revenues experienced a recovery with notable increases in property tax, sales taxes, business taxes, and hotel taxes as compared with the prior fiscal year. In addition, the city's expenses were lower than the prior fiscal year. And now, within each category, the governmental activities column, revenues increased by 210 million, driven by recognition of coronavirus relief fund and American Rescue Plan grant revenues, and growth in property taxes, sales taxes, hotel taxes, and real property transfer tax collections. Total expenses decreased by 194 million, primarily due to lower pension and OPEB-recognized expenses. And within the business-type activities column, revenues increased by 150 million, driven by positive growth in airport, regional wastewater facility, and San Jose Clean Energy operating revenues. While revenues grew during the fiscal year, expenses also increased by 46 million across the same enterprise funds. At the bottom line, the change in net position remained positive and added to the overall business-type activities net position of 1.611 billion. On the next slide, I'll just briefly mention that there's a number of upcoming GASB pronouncement. This slide provides the significant number of pending GASB pronouncements to be reviewed and implemented by the city over the next few fiscal years. Most notably, GASB 96, related to the subscription-based information technology arrangements will have the greatest impact on the city's resources to comply with these standards. Now I'll turn the presentation over back to Julia to cover the successor agency's audited financials.
Thank you, Rick. Just a couple of slides. The, the successor agency, you know, is, will be going away in 2035 when we, the bonds are fully paid. So you, what you see is a large deficit net position that's held in trust. It's approximately 1.1 billion, 178 million dollars. It is mainly attributable to the outstanding 2017 senior and subordinated tax allocation bonds. The, the statement of changes in the fiduciary net position, the additions and deletions and changes were consistent with prior years, and the $97 million change in the net position reduced, as I mentioned, reduced the net position down to a negative 1.178 billion. So with that, I'll turn it over to David.
Thank you, Julia. Okay. So as Julia mentioned in the beginning of the presentation, there's a significant number of deliverables that the city requires. What you have before you today is the citywide financial statements, the ACFOR, and the successor agency to the redevelopment agency. Those are the two primary reports. The first thing I want to talk about was the opinion. The opinion is what accompanies this, this, the ACFOR. And so this is a tremendous document that the city produces each year with a lot of information in it. You know, our responsibility is to express an opinion on whether or not we believe the information is fairly presented in accordance with generally accepted accounting principles. And, and so there's been some changes to how we present our audit opinion under our own audit standards, and so it looks significantly, significantly different than last year, and it keeps growing, as most things do. So it's four pages long, and the first section talks about the opinion, which we expressed an unmodified opinion. So basically, that's the highest level of assurance we can provide as your auditors. In addition to that, we give you some understanding of what the basis of that opinion is, you know, what types of audit standards we follow, and what constitutes generally accepted accounting principles. The, the next area talks about emphasis of matters, and this is where we would highlight something that's important to the reader to understand. And what we highlighted this year was that there was an implementation of a new standard, leases standard, which I'll talk about on the next slide. And then the, and then the letter goes on to talk about our responsibilities and management's responsibilities, and, and other things that you should be aware of as you read this document. We do not express an opinion on the introductory section, where there's a transmittal letter, and we do not express an opinion on the statistical information, which is, you know, is, is good information to have, you know, when you're looking at 10-year trend information to understand how the numbers are, are changing over the years. But we don't express an opinion on that historical presentation. So that's the audit opinion. In addition to the opinion, we also provide a communication to you, the city council, in your role as the governing body, to understand, you know, the, kind of the behind-the-scenes, if you will, of the audit. It lets you know if there were any significant audit findings, if there was any areas of estimates or other areas that might be of interest to the reader, and so, and to you in your role as the governing body. So I'm happy to report that there were no negative matters to report this year. As Julia mentioned, we didn't have any new findings, which is great. I will say that the, the single audit is not done, the federal compliance audit, and typically, those types of audits, compliance audits, tend to have findings in them. But as far as the financial statements go, we did not observe any matters that we need to bring to your attention. So with that, I'll turn it over to Julia. Oh, I'm sorry. One more thing. I was gonna, I was just gonna talk about the leases. So there was one new standard that was required to be implemented this year. There, there was actually five standards that the city is required to, to consider in terms of implementation, but really only one of them stood out, and that was the leases. And much like the pension standards and the post-employment healthcare benefits, the OPEB standards changed the landscape of governmental reporting, bringing on some significant liabilities, leases and, and other areas like the subscription-based IT arrangements that'll be considered next year are doing the same thing. It's bringing on to the financial statements things that were typically just disclosed in the past, and maybe as commitments, maybe as potential obligations, but, but these are more of trying to improve the transparency of financial statements and actually recording these things where it's more than just a commitment, but it's a contractual obligation. So, so that's why leases is such a significant item this year. And while it didn't have maybe the number impact that the pension plans did, there's a lot of disclosure, especially for the airport. The airport has a significant number of leases with airlines and concessionaires and so forth. Those aren't recorded on the books because they're variable. There's some criteria there that has to be determined before those amounts can be accounted for. And so, so those are disclosed fully in the financial statements, and so there's a lot of disclosure in there about those leases. And next year, as, as Rick mentioned, GASB 96, the subscription-based IT arrangements will be the next large implementation. With that, I'll turn it back to Julia.
Thank you, David. So as we mentioned, we have no new findings for the first time in 12 years, and we really do attribute those to some very proactive things that we've done over, especially over the last year or two. We've really benefited from lower staff turnover, which is really important because the longer people stay with us, the more they become skilled and, and can help others within, within the department and across the organization. We also planned and executed citywide fiscal year-end closing training across the organization, again, helping our counterparts across the organization do their work associated with the financial statements. We also implemented a new ACFOR automated software. So if you actually physically look at the report this year, it looks very different in terms of, you know, how it's presented, but it also assisted us with consistent and transparent, transparent mapping of the financial data from our financial management system to the financial statement. So that helped reduce some of the errors as well. And we started that implementation process by doing it with last year's ACFOR so that we could see where all that mapping happened as we put together this year's. And then also, through the support of the city manager and the city council, we formed the Finance Recovery Grants Team, which has really provided subject matter expertise to support the city on a citywide basis to departments with grant funding. And a lot of the audit findings we had received in previous years surrounded various grant funding. So the staffing and implementation of that team has been really key to us providing the necessary financial support across the organization. So there's just a summary here that we had one finding last year, interior controls over financial reporting, and as David mentioned, it has been reported as being corrected. So the recommendations for today are to accept the three reports, item 3.5, which is the annual comprehensive financial report, 3.6, the report to those charged with governance, and 9.1, the successor agency audited financial statements. And with that, we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you very much, Julia. Thanks to everyone. Let's go to the public first.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Yes, once again, the city will pay. I want my reparations, and this is where it happens, okay? You go ahead and listen, and I will teach you where the racial equity lens is most applicable, and it is in these audits. Okay? I didn't hear racial equity one time. I didn't hear it as a measure by which you audit the city. Okay? And I want to know why. This is a direct question to the people that conducted these audits. Where is the racial equity office? I want to see, I want to see a representative of the racial office now, right now, in this city, right here in this committee. Because what we're talking about is the way that our money is spent. Now, either you guys are going to continue to con this city and con via your, your CBO relationships and con the city to think that racial equity is actually being applied, or we're going to do it my way. Because I'm the one that forced the city to create a definition to begin with, in which the city attorney, the city attorney has not given me...
Public comment is on the financial reports. Sort of...
Yeah, yeah. Well, well, the financial report has everything to do with racial equity. Are you saying that it's not, Mayor? Or you say, put it on the record, put it on the record right now...
Would you like to offer a comment on the financial statements?
Put it on the record, put it on the record then, Mayor. Put it on the record.
Thank you.
Back to council.
Thank you. Any questions or comments from my colleagues? I, I had a couple. I celebrated when I saw on page nine, total long-term liabilities decreased by 999.5 million. We'll call it an even billion. It's good enough for government. Primary factors leading to decrease in long-term liabilities for government activities was due to decrease in net pension liability by 1.144 billion and the net OPEB liability by 71 million. So that was all very happy news. I then read a couple subsequent sentences and realized, of course, because we are basing this on historical data and it's a year back, and our returns, that was a good year in the market. We have any sense of how much we're going to fall back in a, in a bad year? I know we have five-year smoothing, but how sensitive are these liabilities numbers to these, these returns?
Yes, thank you for the question. So the, the liability as presented in this financial report is as of the measurement date of June 30th, 2021. So the planned assets as of that date were elevated as compared to where they are now. And when we come back and report next year with the June... And when we come back and report next year with the June 23 audit, it will be reflected, the net assets in those plans will be, as of the, the June 30th, 2022 date. We, we do have, in the long-term liability section in the notes, there is a table that includes the figure of where we expect the liability to be next year. It was significant enough. We're falling backwards. It's not the full billion that we've fallen back as of, that we expect to report next year, but it's, there is a reduction of those planned assets as of the June 30th, 2022.
That'd be a few hundred million, but not the full billion.
I could find the--
That's okay. No, it's all right. I won't. Thank you. I appreciate the, the explanation. There's obviously some significant swings, just given the challenge that we have managing these, these very large funds. And too often, that's the tail wagging the dog. I appreciate all the work that's gone on in this and particularly getting a clean report. That's a, that's a great thing for the city. Thank you, Julia, for all the work that you have led over the many years. We have, well, you and your team have done an enormous amount of work just in the last recent years, and a lot of refinancing that saved taxpayers. I don't know, but I'm guessing tens of millions, if not hundreds of millions of dollars, as well as really improving our credit rating and everything else, which will ensure savings for the years to come. And the reason why that matters is, of course, all of our residents depend on services, and we don't have enough money for all the services our residents deserve. And so we really appreciate all the work that you've led through these years. So thank you very much. All right, any other questions or comments? Okay.
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote on the council member Jimenez's motion.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco. Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Foley. Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Okay, so that was on item 3.5. I'm told we have to take a separate vote on item 3.6. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
All right, let's vote.
Jimenez. Corales.
Yes.
Yeah, on Jimenez.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
All right, finally, 9.1. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
All right, finally, 9.1. Is there a motion?
Move approval.
Second.
Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Corales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis.
Yes.
Esparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Licardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
We're now going to adjourn the redevelopment, I'm sorry, the successor agency, the redevelopment agency. And we're going to continue onto item 3.7. Julia, you're still with us, because we got to talk about debt.
Yes, I am. And I'm going to have Chin Yu Sun, who's our deputy director over debt treasury management, join me. So we also distributed a hard copy of this report to you last week as well. This is the 30, this is the 31st time that we've produced this report for the mayor and city council. I've been intimately involved in all 31 copies of that report, being an initial drafter to now being a reviewer and approver. So the report has really become, I think, an important reporting tool for the city council and our community and the municipal bond market. And I really want to thank the mayor and city council and the city manager for providing leadership over policy and direction and support in guiding this city. It really does help ensure that all the necessary resources can be available for us to access the capital market, to fund facilities for the community, including our very expansive affordable housing program. Also want to thank our debt management team in the finance department, not for the work involved in issuing bonds, but there's a lot of work that goes on in administering a very large and complex portfolio. And we also want to thank all of our partners across the organization, especially the city attorney's office, in assisting in our disclosure and debt portfolio management. And additionally, I'd like to report on our very successful bond sale last week. As you recall, a couple weeks ago, you approved the issuance of bonds for the wastewater system. So on Wednesday last week, we opened up the bond sale with a retail order period. And it was the, very successful in the initial order period, so we accelerated the institutional sale into Wednesday afternoon to take advantage of a favorable market. The market can be a little turbulent, a little unsteady. So when we closed the order period at the end of the day on Wednesday, we had orders totaling just over $2 billion for $268 million worth of bonds. So what we call that is it was nearly eight times greater than the bonds we had. The ultimate, oh my gosh. The true interest cost on the bonds was 4.36, 036%, which complained favorably to, oh, I'm sorry. Got a tickle in my throat.
Julia, you want to just take a little break?
If she gets me a glass of water.
Yeah, why don't you, why don't you take a minute or two? Yeah, I don't want, want to have you suffer here.
We're getting a glass of water right now.
Okay, great.
Okay. The interest rate that we assumed was a 4.345% that was in the staff report, and we ended up with a 4.036%, so better than expected. In the end, we had three AAA ratings. They were our first green bond, climate-certified bonds, and we believe that that helped contribute to it being well-received. And we will producing a more detailed information memo for the city council in the next week or so. So obviously, we're very pleased about that bond sale going as well as it did. So the debt management program, we have issuance, administration, and we provide advisory services across the organization. The debt management policy has a number of policy objectives that are outlined there on the page. So with that, I'll turn it over to Chin Yu to provide a summary of the program.
Thank you, Julia. Chin Yu Sun, the deputy director of finance for debt and treasury management. So as of June 30, 2022, the city has a total of about 4.6 billion debt outstanding of that 4.6 billion, 790 million dollars for conduit debt for housing revenue bonds. The rest, 3.9 billion, are demonstrated in this pie chart showing on the slides. Those, those bonds or short-term notes were issued by the city and the related agencies, including SAR, airport, wastewater facilities, land secure financing, and, and the financing authority. Part of that also is the city's GO bonds. For debt issuance in 2122, we issued, we issued a total of 877 million in new debt. This debt issuance includes untrans, GO bonds, lease revenue bonds, both refunding and new money. We also issued some commercial paper backed by leases and subordinate wastewater notes for regional wastewater facility, and also multi-housing, multi-family housing revenue obligations. We're also planning this for fiscal 2223, it's almost down, we have a complete summary task on the list. We had planned about 621 million debt issuance for 2223, 271, 75 million of a trans, and then the wastewater revenue notes of 300 million have already, have almost been completed. We're planning for additional lease revenue commercial paper issuance, about $40 million, and then an additional 6.4 million for flood recovery project. The city operates about four variable rate programs, including airport CP notes, the city financing authority CP notes, and then the revolving credit, short-term subordinates for the regional wastewater, and clean energy credit facility. In total, those variable rate programs are about $615 million. As of June 30, 2022, we have about $348 million outstanding. They are variable rate program because the interest rate on these program are adjustable to some short-term variable benchmarks, such as LIBOR, SOFR, depending on the, the agreements with the bank. We have talked about some of the project completed, completed some of the, including bond issuance. Additionally, we also extended letter credit for airport and then financing authority. And we had made some moves, made some progress in the pension obligation bond inside. The city council authorized the issuance, the bond issuance to refund certain pension obligations. The city filed a complaint for validation in November 21st, and we actually received some tentative decision from the court, Santa Clara County Court just recently. We also issued a request for qualification proposal for the underwriter pools, and we selected underwriter pools for the regional wastewater facility bonds. And for, that's the recent 2022 B bond, and we also had an underwriter pool for the lease revenue bonds issued earlier in the year. That's the 2022 A bonds. The trans funding also required us to have a, to request for bond and bank commitments that was completed earlier in, in the, in the fiscal year. We also redeemed a special assessment bond, so series 24Q, and special tax bond, CFD The city held four TAFRA, five TAFRA hearings, four of them are held by finance department on behalf of the, on behalf of the city council. Vitalia and Ameriposa issued in, on January 28th, 2022. The other two projects, McEvoy and Algarve, returned their CD allocation because the costs increased and then lack of investors' interest in those projects. The city council held another TAFRA hearing for 425 Auzuriya apartments in August, and the bond was actually issued by an external agency, California Municipal Financing Authority, in October 2021. The GO bonds of the city is very highly rated. We actually issued about $200 million GO bonds in fiscal year 2122. The bonds are rated AA1, AA+ and AAA from Moody's, S&amp;P, and then Fitch respectively. Our bond rating are on par with the county centricar bond rating, and a slightly higher than the state rating. Nationwide, looking at our GO bond rating, we're very high on the list. So this is a look at the 10 largest cities, the GO debt rating. As you can see, the city sales say it ranked number two, and on the same, at the same level as the city of Phoenix. Our other debt, including lease revenue debt, and then some enterprise funded, are rated slightly differently. The lease revenue debt has mostly AA rating. If the lease revenue debt are based on essential assets, the ratings for those debt by Fitch and Moody's are slightly higher than the assets that are, that are less essential. The airport bonds are in the A category, A2A, and A2A and A for the, from the other two agencies. And then the six SAR bonds are rated AA category. The senior debt are notch higher than the subordinate debt. The race, the regional wastewater and debt are AAA, as we just recently issued. So as I mentioned earlier, some of the project for 2223, we have completed, including 275 million in trans. We also redeemed CFD number six and 10 special tax bond in September. The issuance of wastewater revenue bonds of 300 million is about to close next week, and we are diligently to finishing up the, the San Jose Clean Energy Credit Facility of $225 million. Going, looking out for the rest of the year, we are going to, we're anticipating issuing about 40 million in commercial paper to support the water resource administrative, administration and operation, and another 6.4 million for the flood recovery project. The, we just recently got a notice from the housing department regarding the multi-housing project, including Tamian, the Charles, 1860 Alomaroc, and 777 West St. Carlos. All these four projects have well-received CD-like allocation. We'll be working on the issuance of those multi-housing revenue bonds in January 2023. Additionally, we'll be working on the issuance of a request for proposal for multiple financial services. Then I'll hand back the presentation to Julia.
So in summary, the debt management group in the finance department continues to be highly active in areas not just of issuance, but administration and providing advisory services across the organization. We work really hard in maintaining a strong and dedicated debt management program that helps protect the city's financial interests, our credit ratings, and the long-term management of debt compliance to minimize any financial penalties. Compliance with all those regulatory requirements is really important because if we don't, they can result in significant penalties. So with that, our recommendation is for you to accept the report, and we're available to answer any questions.
Thank you, Chin Yu, and thank you, Julia. All right, let's go to the public.
Paul Soto.
Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Thank you for mentioning the housing. I was trying to give the mayor an education on how racial equity needs to be applied with respect to bonds. But no, I'm rudely interrupted. So anyway, let me continue. Is that racial equity office needs to be here because of these housing bonds, any kind of bond. Why? Because the profiteering that occurred generationally. This city is sitting on assets that was created by the undemocratic process of redlining. Redlining was not democratic. There was no Chicanos that participated in that, yet our labor was exploited. You're going to continue to hear this until the day that I'm six feet under at Oak Hill. Until that day, you're going to continue hearing this. This city owes me. And what we're going to do now, this is what we're going to do, I'm going to tell you what we're going to do. We're going to start creating bonds that are going to tax all of the homes in redlined areas. I want 2% of every home in a redlined area, 2% over $100,000. That's what I want. That is justice. That is racial equity. And I'm, Mr. Mayor, you're not interrupting? You're not interrupting? Thank you. So let me continue. This do is all those, all of those homes and all the property that was created by the undemocratic and unlawful, immoral, and unethical practice of red--
Sir, do you intend to speak on the annual debt report?
Because I'm talking of debt. See, because the bond measures, the bond measures, in this, see, this is, this is cross-examination, Mayor. Do you cross-examine anything that comes--
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. Thanks for the words of Paul Soto. In the very least, he talked about creative ways to talk about the future of possible bonds-- bonds that I thought can be needed and useful to this process. So thank you. For myself, for this item, and I guess for these set of items, I just wanted to offer a quick reminder that we, boy, this past year and into the next two thousand twenty-three, we have had kind of some difficult worries and a lot of considerations, and it's been tough to try to navigate and forecast. And but yet, I think on the horizon in two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five, we all see a really hopeful, good future for ourselves about how to go about our city government and community programs and projects. And I think if we just stick to, in two thousand twenty-three, really good practices and ideas and standards, and listen to each other along the way really well, I, that's how you set up a really good two thousand twenty-four and twenty-five for ourselves. It is there waiting for us. We just, I just hope we follow the really good steps to get to that really good place. And I think it's a time that can be open for everyone, more open to, for, for decision-making of good things. Thanks a lot.
Back to council.
Thank you. All right, questions for the council? While folks are thinking them, I just had two. One relates to variable rate debt. I was looking at that section and grateful to see we have no outstanding variable rate bonds. And I know we've done a lot of refinancing in the good times with, with low interest rates. I see six hundred fifteen million dollars authorized, and there is a credit, credit of various kinds that I assume is all variable rate. And do we have a sense of that six hundred fifteen million? How much is really out there? And are we concerned about how much is out there in variable rate?
So if we, if we, on the last tape side, last column, it shows three hundred and forty-eight million outstanding.
I'm sorry, which one are you looking at?
I'm looking at the table on, on the slide six.
Okay, if we can pull that up, that'd be great. Thanks.
So a majority of that three hundred and forty-eight million that's outstanding is the two hundred and thirty-six million dollars associated with the regional wastewater facility, the short-term subordinate note.
Right.
That is actually refunded with the bonds that we will be closing next week.
Great.
So that number in March will go to zero. They'll sit in an escrow account for ninety days. We're doing a little bit of a, of a mathematical arbitrage play. By letting it sit in an account for ninety days, we'll be able to earn interest around seven, eight hundred. That, like, how much is it? Four point, yeah, so we're earning an interest rate higher than the interest rate on the bonds. We get to keep the interest, we get to keep the interest earnings, which is several hundred thousand dollars, which then will be attributable to paying the next debt service payment. So it's kind of like free money. So that number will then go down to zero.
Right.
And then what happens is, is the way we have the program working with the regional wastewater facility, as they do projects, they'll build back up and issuing against those subordinate notes. Once it hits around three hundred million dollars again, they'll pay it off with long-term bonds. And so we have found that that process of doing that is kind of, think of it as construction borrowing that you would see in the corporate market.
Yeah.
We have found that that works well for these large, multi-year projects, like at the regional wastewater facility, and much like we did with the airport and their commercial paper program. And then the airport has a little bit, they have, you know, they have about thirty-four million dollars of their seventy-five million outstanding. And then we have the City of San Jose Financing Authority, we have a hundred and seventy-five million dollars authorized, but only sixty-six million is outstanding. A large portion of that is attributable to the borrowing for the clean energy department, and we're working with them as their cash flow increases and their cash balances increases determine when they're going to pay that back. So staff may look at bringing down that facility mount over time, just based on what we need. The commercial paper program for the city has been in place since two thousand and four, and it's had a history of kind of the capacity being up and down based on what we think our short-term borrowing will be. The council will see in the springtime authorization for about forty million of commercial paper notes, again, to be a bridge financing before we issue long-term bonds for the facility for the municipal water department. So that's kind of, and then the Barclays facility is to help with the, the clean energy program. So, so it's a, there's real thought and thinking about strategically being in this variable rate market for these particular needs.
Right, thank you. Appreciate that. I know we're all watching the Fed, and it's not going to be pretty for a while. So thank you for that. And finally, on refinancings, are we pretty much done for a while?
Yes, there is, the employee parking garage across the street is, is eligible in the early part of next year. The thinking is, is that will be done in conjunction with the long-term financing for the municipal water administration facility, because they're both relatively small. So if they get done together, there's some economies of scale. The airport has a refunding that is eligible in the first quarter of calendar year twenty-four. It can be done ninety days in advance of that, so that would be late twenty-three, early twenty-four. And then the next big one that's really, really eligible wouldn't be until twenty-seven for the successor agency.
Okay.
So most of it's pretty much done.
Given what we think we know about interest rates, are there anything that compels us in this difficult market to be refinancing in high-rate environment? Or what will be a higher-rate environment, I guess I shouldn't say?
I mean, I mean, the policy says we want to have at least a three percent net present value savings. So we, you know, we do that math and determine, you know, whether, whether it makes sense to do it or not.
Okay, thanks. All right, any other questions? If not, we'll hear a motion.
Move acceptance.
Move approval.
All right, I'll take that as a, as a motion from Councilmember Mahan and a second from Councilmember Roth. Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Hi.
Carrasco. Davis.
Yes.
Ms. Parza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ricardo.
Aye. All right, five point one are the actions related to the airport accessibility upgrades, phase three, the rebid of the project. There's no presentation, but I see Matt here, ready to answer questions. Anyone's got him? Let's go to the public.
Paul Soto. Okay, going back to council.
All right, Councilmember Jimenez.
Yeah, thank you. Just had a question for Matt. I was reading through a report, and it was, it seems like we went out to bid, didn't like the numbers, went out to bid again, and we ended up with the same firm, essentially, one of the same firms submitting, and that's who eventually got it. I was a little confused because it seems like in the first round of bids that went out, it was, I think, a hundred percent over the engineer's estimate, and then they came, the second bid, it was, it was about fifty-something percent of the engineer's estimate, but it seems like we, we increased the engineer estimate. I'm trying to make sense of some of what was transpiring during, during the course of that bidding process. If you can help clarify that a little bit.
Sure, thank you, Councilmember Matt Kena, Director.
And I read the report, but there was just a lot of moving parts.
Sure, thank you, Matt Kena, Director of Public Works. Yes, this was, this been, has, has been a challenging one. I think we've kind of been, in a way, chasing the market on, on how much this costs. It's, it's complicated to work inside the airport terminal, which is part of the reason, I think, our, it's been difficult for, contractor can't just come in one day and then do the work and then be gone. There's a lot of coordination, a lot of stops and startings on this project. And so as, on the latest bid, as you noticed, it was significantly over our engineer's estimate. After evaluating that, and as noted in our memo, we, we feel that it's prudent, and John can help me here too, to move forward for a couple reasons. One is because after reevaluating what the market will bear, the pro, the fact that this project is a complicated environment to work in, we feel the engineer's estimate should have been higher that went out to bid. And although, having said that, as, as we can see in the memo, the price is, would still be over what the higher engineer's estimate. There's other factors, such as needing to complete this project quickly and also get it under construction by the end of the calendar year in order to take advantage of a ten million dollar federal funding source. That makes it prudent for us to recommend award of this project, and there's no guarantee that sending it out to bid again would get a lower amount. So I hope I answered your question there.
Yeah, yeah, you did. And so the first bid, there was two folks that submitted, actually, one was unresponsive, I think is what you determined, but the second time around, there was two as well. And I think, I read on the report, so if there were, if we were to go a third time out to bid, that we, we wouldn't expect necessarily different results, right? Given that there just aren't a lot of folks to...
Thank you for the question. It is possible we could get different results. We think we may get lower bids. However, we'd, there's no guarantee we would get lower bids, and if we did, it's likely we would lose the ten million dollar grant because of the timeline.
Okay, all right, yeah. Totally supportive, obviously, we want to get in the timeline as it relates to securing that grant. The other, the other broader question that came to mind for me in this particular item is, so this case, we increase the engineer estimate, you know, just to make, you know, chasing the market, as you will. Do we expect that that's going to emerge in different bids that are going out for different projects around the city? Is that a trend that you see sort of playing out in different spaces?
Thank you for that question, Councilmember. Yes and no, it depends on the industry. There's supply chain logistics, as, as everybody knows worldwide, with various different types of equipment and materials. There's certain industries and certain types of projects where, where the supply chain is a lot more difficult and a lot more impactful. On this project, one of the, so, so we are, we're not necessarily seeing everything always costing more, but we are definitely seeing an kind of up and down dynamic market as far as bids, and sometimes it's a little harder to estimate nowadays than it used to be.
Okay, all right. Okay, cool, I'll move approval. Thanks, Matt.
Thank you, is there a second? All right. Let's, I think those are all the questions. Let's vote.
Jimenez.
Yes.
Morales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis. Davis. Ms. Parza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Ricardo.
Aye. So Lori's been sitting here wondering, are we going to get to her item before one o'clock? Well, it's twelve fifty-three, so I recommend we forge ahead fearlessly because we have just two items, six point one and eight point one, and then theoretically no items until six. But that would mean that two things, one is we have to put off lunch for maybe five or ten minutes, and secondly, as Vice Mayor mentioned to me, don't put your fingers anywhere near Vice Mayor's face, apparently. That's, yes. Yes, exactly. Are we okay just going forward? Okay, let's do that. Lori, welcome. Wait, you do have ceremonials, don't you? Oh, I can't do that, okay. So we got to come back one way or another at one thirty?
We need a lunch break.
Okay.
I'm sorry, Lori, but I really think we should break now, Mayor.
Okay, we have ceremonials.
At one thirty.
All right.
You're going to, you're going to get a few hangry council members.
Okay, we don't want hangry. All right. Yeah. Thank you for your patience. Let's take a break and come back at one thirty.
Sorry, Lori.
No, it was a good point. I forgot about the ceremonials. I forgot about the ceremonials.
All right, welcome back, everybody. We'll call the meeting, resume the meeting for the afternoon, December 6th. Let's go to roll first.
Jimenez.
Present.
Paralis.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Present.
Davis.
Asparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Jones.
Present.
Licardo.
Present.
We have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to start this afternoon session with an invocation provided by Pastor Danny Sanchez of the City Peace Project. I've been honored to know Pastor Danny for, oh, more than a decade, since my days as a council member, and he was serving many young people in the Washington Guadalupe neighborhood. Now, really focused predominantly on teens and East San Jose, and I don't know anybody who has a bigger heart for our community than Pastor Danny. He is a San Jose native, community leader, founding executive director of the City Peace Project, also the author of a memoir entitled Post Traumatic Quest, which details his own troubled past and his journey to become a role model for young people here in our community. The City Peace Project addresses youth violence and trauma and aims to empower our youth through personal mentorships so they can thrive. It's in three school districts across the county and 25 schools. He has also presented to companies such as LinkedIn, Facebook, and Google, featured in many media outlets such as Forbes and Huffington Post. He's won numerous awards and accommodations from the city and also from President Barack Obama, the White House Champion of Change in 2012. His social justice efforts led to work with government agencies such as Department of Justice here in the United States and the Ministry of Innovation, Science, and Technology of Jalisco, Mexico, and he has created the Volunteer Crisis Response Chaplaincy Program in Silicon Valley. I don't know how you sleep, Pastor Danny, but we're grateful that you are here and grateful for all the work you do. Welcome.
We are here because we love you, all right? We are here to support you. You are amazing. Have a great day. Peace out, brother peace out.
What is the City Peace Project? We're so glad you asked. The City Peace Project is an organization based in San Jose that is all about inspiring youth to live lives marked by active love and peace. We believe in pouring into our community, helping each other to go after our goals, loving one another, and having a lot of fun along the journey. Every day, we are seeing the lives of students transformed through our mentoring that addresses conflict resolution, gang prevention, and social and emotional health. We've seen that students who are caught in a cycle of depression and anxiety are introduced to a life of hope, joy, and peace. We're also invested in supporting low-income families with resources such as rent, food, and clothing. We've had the blessing of hosting Bible studies among many of these families who are eager to know the source of our love, Jesus. We love because He first loved us.
Councilmember Paralis.
Councilmember Carrasco.
Councilmember Asparza.
And Councilmember Arenas for serving our city. Thank you for putting your heart into it. We appreciate it. I pray for all of your future endeavors that they would be blessed. As we gather together in this holiday season with our family and friends to spend time together, let us remember those that are less fortunate, that are dealing with loss, separation, and pain. The message of the coming of Jesus Christ did not come to kings, rulers, or religious leaders. It was to the shepherds working in the fields, tending the sheep. The message came to the people. Jesus was not born in a beautiful castle or cathedral, but He was born in a manger among the people. He did not come for the powerful and the privileged, but the poor and the persecuted. He was for the people. This Christmas and beyond, help us to live grateful, joyfully together, loving and helping others as the people. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together and pray for our city, for peace, for charity, and for stability. I pray for our mayor, our mayor-elect, for all elected and appointed officials, that they would lead with compassion and love. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern even in the middle of conflicting interests and issues of our times. Might they be committed to work together through their differences?
All right, welcome back, everybody. We'll call the meeting, resume the meeting for the afternoon of December 6th. Let's go to roll first.
Jimenez.
Present.
Paralis.
Here.
Cohen.
Here.
Carrasco.
Present.
Davis.
Asparza.
Here.
Arenas.
Foley.
Here.
Mahan.
Jones.
Present.
Licardo.
Present.
We have a call.
All right, thank you. All right, we're going to start this afternoon session with an invocation provided by Pastor Danny Sanchez of the City Peace Project. I've been honored to know Pastor Danny for, oh, more than a decade since my days as a council member, and he was serving many of the young people in the Washington-Guadalupe neighborhood. Now, really focused predominantly on teens and East San Jose. And I don't know anybody who has a bigger heart for our community than Pastor Danny. He is a San Jose native, community leader, founding executive-director of the City Peace Project. He's also the author of a memoir entitled "Post-Traumatic Quest", which details his own troubled past and his journey to become a role model for young people here in our community. The City Peace Project addresses youth violence and trauma and aims to empower our youth through personal mentorships so they can thrive. It's in three school districts across the county and 25 schools. He has also presented to companies such as LinkedIn, Facebook, and Google, featured in many media outlets such as Forbes and Huffington Post. He's won numerous awards and accommodations from the city and also from President Barack Obama, the White House Champion of Change in 2012. His social justice efforts led to work with government agencies such as Department of Justice here in the United States and the Ministry of Innovation, Science, and Technology of Jalisco, Mexico. And he has created the Volunteer Crisis Response Chaplaincy Program in Silicon Valley. I don't know how you sleep, Pastor Danny, but we're grateful that you are here and grateful for all the work you do. Welcome.
We are here because we love you, all right? We are here to support you. You are amazing. Have a great day. Peace out, brother peace out.
What is the City Peace Project? We're so glad you asked. The City Peace Project is an organization based in San Jose that is all about inspiring youth to live lives marked by active love and peace. We believe in pouring into our community, helping each other to go after our goals, loving one another, and having a lot of fun along the journey. Every day, we are seeing the lives of students transformed through our mentoring that addresses conflict resolution, gang prevention, and social and emotional health. We've seen that students who are caught in a cycle of depression and anxiety are introduced to a life of hope, joy, and peace. We're also invested in supporting low-income families with resources such as rent, food, and clothing. We've had the blessing of hosting Bible studies among many of these families who are eager to know the source of our love, Jesus. We love because he first loved us.
Councilmember Paralis, councilmember Carrasco, councilmember Asparza, and councilmember Arenas for serving our city. Thank you for putting your heart into it. We appreciate it. I pray for all of your future endeavors, that they would be blessed. As we gather together in this holiday season with our family and friends to spend time together, let us remember those that are less fortunate, that are dealing with loss, separation, and pain. The message of the coming of Jesus Christ did not come to kings, rulers, or religious leaders. It was to the shepherds working in the fields, tending the sheep. The message came to the people. Jesus was not born in a beautiful castle or cathedral, but he was born in a manger among the people. He did not come for the powerful and the privileged, but the poor and the persecuted. He was for the people. This Christmas and beyond, help us to live grateful, joyfully together, loving and helping others as the people. Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we come together and pray for our city, for peace, for charity, and for stability. I pray for our mayor, our mayor-elect, for all elected and appointed officials, that they would lead with compassion and love. I am asking that you would graciously grant them wisdom to govern even in the middle of conflicting interests and issues of our times. Might they be committed to work together through their differences with a sense of welfare, meeting the true needs of the people? Let them serve with compassion. Lord, in addition to our leaders, we thank you for the great people that live in this city. With over a million people of every race, creed, and color, we ask for your continued blessings. As citizens representing this great city, we know that we must continue to create an atmosphere of peace for our children and harmony for generations to come. Might we commit to love our neighbors even if you have loved us? We know that you can do this because the Holy Scripture reminds us the blessed of the peacemakers. Make us your peacemakers, oh, Lord. We cry out together for continued peace in this city, that we withstand united to impact this community for the greater good. We know that true peace in our city depends on how those of us in this diverse metropolis will choose to labor together, learn together, and live together. From the offices of City Hall to the streets of our inner city, from the great glory of the Silicon Valley to the corners of every neighborhood, from the pinnacles of technology and innovation to the hallways and classrooms of every school, we know there is still work to be done. So might we continue to ease the pain of the poor, the unhoused, the hopeless, the exploited, the children that are lost and hurting? We never want our great accomplishments to remove us from their pain. We remember them and promise to work together on their behalf. God bless our city, San Jose, in Jesus' name. Amen. Thank you.
Thank you, Pastor Danny. All right, we're going to have two ceremonial items this afternoon. First, Vice Mayor Jones is going to help us recognize and commend the Small Business Advisory Task Force. I see several task force members here, so I want you to come on down.
I have so much pride in presenting this commendation to the San Jose Small Business Advisory Task Force. As some of you might know, we established this task force in 2018 because we felt that there was a gap in providing a forum for small businesses to communicate their concerns, their wants, and also their desires. This was important to me because small businesses make up over 96% of all businesses in San Jose. They are a large source of the economic and cultural vibrancy of our city. This task force is made up of minority chambers, business associations, and the San Jose Chamber of Commerce. I am proud today to recognize their efforts, dedication, diligence in supporting small, minority-owned local businesses in San Jose, and ensuring that their voices were heard. Some of their accomplishments include working closely with Public Works to launch the Construction Academy for new contractors interested in doing business with the city, advocating for a disparity study, which is currently underway, to better understand how minority-owned businesses participate in our contracting policies and practices, improving the city's procurement program and increasing opportunities for small businesses in minor public works construction projects, improving the city's ADA compliance education, resources, and funding for CAFs grants and structural remediation through state legislation AB 2164, and ultimately ensuring our small businesses are accessible and reducing lawsuits. They also provide a forum for small businesses to communicate their challenges, such as potential displacement, the barriers to flea market, Cali Willow, VTA bar, et cetera. I'm pleased to share that an effort to recognize and continue their invaluable work, we are currently working with OED to transition the task force into a new standing committee, the Small Business Advisory Committee, that will be supported by OED. It was modeled after the Small Business Advisory Task Force, and I look forward to seeing how it continues to provide that forum and network for small businesses across the city. With that, I'd like to thank the San Jose Small Business Advisory Task Force for their time and service. And now, I'm going to welcome Dennis King to come up and say a few words.
You've been keeping track. Thank you. There was a time when the city of San Jose had a Small Business Development Commission, and that went away. And then, city council member recognized the value and importance, the significance, of having someplace to go for businesses, business owners, when they've got concerns and complaints. And as such, he then, on his own initiative, created the Small Business Advisory Task Force and invited local business advocates from throughout the city to participate. The ethnic chambers, Hispanic, Vietnamese, Chinese, Filipino-American, Black Chamber, Rainbow Chamber, local neighborhood business associations like the Winchester Business Association, we immediately saw the value of what now the vice mayor talked about in terms of building community, about being that force, that advocacy for the small businesses, especially those who felt voiceless. And so, in that spirit, we were very quick to embrace what his vision was. We appreciated your gumption for sticking through it. And so, for now over five years, we've been meeting monthly to hear the concerns, complaints of small businesses throughout the city and beyond. We've been able to address issues, as you pointed out, some have become law, some for the state of California. We also had a great opportunity to promote the successes, the programs that the city of San Jose was doing on behalf of small businesses. So overall, I think we were very busy. I think we were very effective. The future has lots of question marks right now, but we're optimistic in terms of our experience because we know how well we've worked together. We know how much the city needs that voice of the small businesses. And in that spirit, we certainly salute the vice mayor for your gumption, for making this happen. And if we were the mirror image of the commission, more importantly, we were the mirror image of the city of San Jose. So, thank you. Thank you all, my God. Thank you.
Okay, the KRTY team is here. I'm going to ask them to please come down. And Councilmember Paralis will be saying a few words.
All right, welcome. Today, it is my pleasure to recognize and present KRTY with this commendation to celebrate their many years of success serving our city. Based in San Jose, KRTY is a country music station that was established in 1992, and they have made it their mission and pride to bring the very best of country music stars together with the fans that love the music. KRTY staff spent countless hours listening to new artists and new songs to find the very best in the genre, and then, supporting the artists by introducing their songs and inviting them to play locally. They have annually brought over 25 live country shows to the Rodeo Club, that was formerly in District 3 and just outside of downtown San Jose, where members of our community are able to experience up-and-coming artists along with established country artists for an affordable price. While on air, KRTY was the number-one country station in the Bay Area for over 25 years and the number-one country station in the United States. Earlier this year, KRTY concluded service at 95.3 FM and made the bold progressive switch over to a fully streaming service at karty.com. Having myself been a listener for over 20 years at KRTY, I can say it has continually brought forward the best of country music, and it continues to do so today. And I'm proud to say that even with this switch and now being an international organization, they continue to focus on serving the city of San Jose and the South Bay, and they continue to bring amazing shows right here to the rodeo club. And now, I, along with my council colleagues and our mayor, would like to present this commendation to KRTY for over 25 years of bringing the best of country music and artists to our city. And I'd like to invite up the GM, Nate Deaton, to say a few words.
Thank you. It's in the true spirit of the entrepreneurial spirit of San Jose and the local market that we are doing something no one's ever done before, which is streaming a terrestrial radio station that was once on a frequency now live on the internet. And it's been remarkably successful. Speaking of our shows, we do have a show Friday night at the rodeo club. And it just occurred to me, as I was sitting here, and I don't know why I didn't think about this before, but almost a year ago, a year ago next week, we had Garth Brooks in the rodeo club. So, we've had a few names lately. But with me today are the president of our company, Lloyd Schmidt, our longtime morning personality, Gary Scott Thomas, our CFO, Lisa Salud. Thank you once again for this amazing award. All of our employees, Susan Pori, Al Tina Ferguson, Al Brighton, Michael Moore, Julie Stevens. I think I missed one, but that's okay. Nicole Woodson, there we go, are all members of this community and are very appreciative of this council chamber and the city that we've all made our living in for the last 30-some-odd years. Thank you.
All right, we have two items on the afternoon agenda before we break for the evening agenda. So, let's start with item 6.1, Power Rate Service Options and Financial Reserve Policy.
Mayor, this is Magdalena, and I have an adjournment.
Oh, my gosh, you're absolutely right. Please forgive me, Councilmember Carrasco. Let me go there. I'm sorry, we're just out of order today, so I'll be catching up. We have... You'd give me just one moment. Oh, thank you. All right, so, Councilmember Carrasco, thank you for reminding me. The meeting will be adjourned in honor of Mary Jimenez Fieros, who was an East San Jose resident and part of the Rosie Riveters, a cultural icon of World War II, representing many women who helped to save and support our country in such a challenging moment of World War II. There she is, pictured. Councilmember Carrasco, please, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor. And yes, we're a little discombobulated, but this is a wonderful opportunity to recognize one of our very own heroes in the city of San Jose. We're all familiar with the Rosie the Riveter image, a cultural icon of the World War II, representing the brave women who worked in factories and in shipyards. I don't think these women ever went out to make this kind of impact, but the impact that they've made, especially on women, transcends time and place. Many of us often channel the power pose, dressing up as them with the iconic bandana, rolled-up jeans, and a fist held high in the sky. Their service was invaluable in getting us through the war. And it's with a heavy heart, a great deal of love, and deep respect that we adjourned today's council meeting in honor of Dia Mary Fieros, San Jose's very own Rosie the Riveter. Rosie was born, I'm sorry, Mary was born on April 20th, 1920, in Delta, Utah. Mary Fieros lived a long and fulfilling life, and in 1925, her family moved to Tahima, California. And it was in the third grade that she would meet her future husband, Mike Fieros. Their life changed in 1937 when Mike left to serve in the United States Army during World War II as he was stationed in Long Beach, California. Mary followed her husband and entered the Douglas Aircraft Factory as a Riveter, working on B-29 bomber aircrafts. Mary then moved back to San Jose after her husband was stationed in Fresno, where she served as a manager and original employee for Levi's, which was located on Notre Dame Avenue in San Jose. What I admire most about the women of this era is not just the influence that they've had on us over time, but really, there was a pivotal moment where these women were leaving the kitchen and child-rearing and entering the workforce revolutionizing socioeconomic relations for our nation. These women opened up paths to today's modern woman. They questioned gender roles. They challenged the oppression of women and children. And they made decisions to live a life with intention. Mary eventually settled in East Side, District 5 specifically, adding to the incredible history of our district and our city. Funny enough, Aunt Mary's nephew, Richie, who's there in the picture, was classmates with my very own son, Diego. So, we had this long-distance connection. But what caused me to listen up was one day while I was serving in this role, she was introduced as Rosie the Riveter. And it was shared that Cal Berkeley had written a story and put her story in a museum in Berkeley. What was shocking about it is that we had never recognized her in her own city of San Jose. Two years ago, a group of friends from the Spirit of 45 Committee, which stages commemorations of the end of World War II at History Park in San Jose, arranged a beautiful parade to pass in front of her house. The caravan included a dozen World War II-era vehicles and the artist Seaworth Johnson's 500-pound Rosie the Riveter sculpture on the back of a truck. It was an amazing moment to join our also-then-Chief Eddie Garcia and San Jose Fire Department in honoring her centennial birthday. I want to thank her niece Gina Marie Barrajas, who I think is there in the audience, and her husband Carlos Barrajas for helping us share the story of Aunt Mary. Every day, we're losing our seniors, especially those that belong to the Centennial Club. And it's my hope that we lift up their stories by offering them dignity and respect, and we give to them what they gave to us. Join me in honoring the hard and brave work that she and her husband did for our country. May Mary rest in eternal peace. And Mayor, I think Gina's there, her niece, to say a few words.
On behalf of our entire family and my Aunt Mary, thank you so much for the special recognition. We are so proud of all that she's accomplished in her 102 years. She was a proud Latina woman who worked hard for the unions and for the country as Rosie the Riveter. I know she would be so honored, and we are so honored to call her Artia Mary. Thank you again for the special recognition, and she will and is deeply missed.
Happy holidays, everybody. Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. Thank you, Councilmember Carrasco. All right. We do have a closed session report. Okay, let's go to the closed session report.
We don't have a closed session report, Mayor, but it's next on the agenda. We have nothing to report on a closed session. Thank you.
Okay. Now Lori's going to come back to the box. Item 6.1, San Jose Clean Energy Power Rates, Service Options, and Financial Reserve Policy. Thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. I'm Lori Mitchell, Director of Community Energy, and very pleased today to be joined by Amanda Roscoe. She's our Public Information Manager. And Zach Strike is on hybrid. He unfortunately is sick today. So this item is our power mix and rates, as well as our financial reserve policy. So as background, in the past, we have always set our rates as a fixed percentage of PG&E's rates. There are many benefits to this since starting up our operations. It allowed us to really start up quickly, and it was very easy for our customers to understand rates under a new service provider, as well as establish customer confidence. But there have been many challenges with this type of rate structure. As PG&E's rates have risen and fallen, our rates have had to change with them, which happened several times throughout the year. And then probably the most significant challenge has been the added fees in relation to the PCIA. So as that PCIA has risen, that has limited our ability to set rates that fully recover our costs and limits our ability to build reserves. So this year, we set some rate-setting goals coming off of the recommendations that Deloitte provided us last year. So the first goal is to make sure we offer competitive and stable rates over the long term and that we use a cost-of-service model to set those rates. And in that cost-of-service model, that we build our reserves to at least 180 days of operating expenses to strengthen our financial position. So first, just a little bit about the cost-of-service process. This is a very industry-accepted framework for utility rate setting. The first step in the process is really to develop our revenue, our total revenue requirement that we need to recover. Then the next steps are to allocate those costs among customers and different types of customers, for example, residential and commercial customers. And then finally, to design rates to recover those costs. Of course, in a competitive environment, it's more complicated than that. Once we understand what our costs are and how they're allocated, we always need to compare those rates to our competition, and in this case PG&E, and make sure what we're recommending is still a competitive rate in the market. So with that, I'll move on to the results and recommendations today. So we started this process with a consultant to do the cost-of-service study. And the first step there, as I mentioned, is to understand our revenue requirements. Our main cost driver is always our power supply costs. And so you see that that varies every year for a number of reasons. Number one, market forces, and then also it varies with our load and our usage. So we looked at a number of scenarios. You can see an expected case, a better and a worse case there. And then we took all of our fixed costs and added that in. And then we had originally told the consultant to build our reserve over three years, which resulted in needing to contribute to that reserve about $66 million a year to come up with our total revenue requirement. And once we completed this study, then we did, the next step in the process is we looked at, okay, well, where is PG&E rates going to go? And then importantly, where is the PCIA headed? And you can see the chart here, which really demonstrates the volatility that we've been dealing with. You know, we started our operations back in 2018 with a PCIA that was about just over $20 a megawatt hour. It rose, it doubled all the way up to over $40 a megawatt hour in 2021, which very negatively impacted our revenues. It has since settled back down into the 20s this year and unprecedented. It is expected to go almost to zero next year, which is an opportunity to build our So what we're recommending is that we go ahead and build our reserve almost all of the way in one year instead of doing that over three years, because we do have the opportunity to do that in 2023. So our recommendation is to set our rates lower again. So green source, we go to about 1% to 3% lower than PG&E for most customers. But important to note, these would be cost-of-service rates, not a fixed percentage. We are recommending that we keep the renewable content at 60%. For green value, that product, just as a reminder, was priced at parity with PG&E. We are recommending to discontinue that and to transition those costs, those customers to green source so that they receive the discount and also the higher renewable energy content. It's important to note that we will still keep track of these customers in the event that we need to bring this product back in the future so that we could automatically enroll them, because we know they are the most price-sensitive. For total green, that maintains the same as it was. And then importantly, for SJ cares, we are recommending that we increase the discount from 5% to 10% below green source, and then keep that renewable energy content the same at 60%. This will result in significant savings to our community, over $35 million in aggregate compared to what they're paying in 2022. So we're very pleased to have this opportunity. And you might ask, well, how does that impact our financial position? Because our recommendation is to build those reserves faster, you can see that by this time next year, we expect to have just over that 180 days in an operating reserve, although you also see a better and a worse-case projection here depending on power supply costs and where ultimately PG&E's rates and PCIA settle. And then you can see on a fiscal-year basis, we do expect to end the fiscal year with just over 90 days of operating expenses in a reserve. And important to note, this is on net of repaying that commercial loan repayment. And then finally, today for your consideration is a financial reserve policy. So this reserve requires us to build and maintain at least 180 days of operating reserves. This is a CCA best practice. It's also been recommended to us by Deloitte last year. Some of the benefits are that it'll improve our financial stability, allow us to really provide stable and competitive rates over the long term. It also allows us to secure better commercial terms from our power suppliers. And finally, it's important to someday receiving an investment-grade credit rating for San Jose Clean Energy. And with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you, Lori. Thank you for delivering all the great news. Okay, let's go to the public first.
Paul Soto.
Yes, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Again, racial equity. As you, as you start installing the infrastructure for EV cars, all these clean energy aspirations that you have, the cost of electricity is going to exponentially accelerate. Okay? I know none of you care, because you're going to be gone. You're going to be gone. You've already benefited your benefactors and the people that you actually work for. So you're not going to be concerned about petty things like that. I mean, you know, it may make the difference between whether or not you go to Santana Row versus Valley Fair. It may make that kind of a difference, but it's not really going to make a difference in your lives. Okay? But to the Mexicanos and to the Chicanos, that's whom I am a part of, I'm a part of that community, the Mexicano and the Chicano community, okay? You're not giving a cost-benefit analysis with respect to population. And you have the data. Don't tell me that you don't, because you guys hail and love data. You guys talk about it a lot. You talk a real good one, a big one, but you don't apply the data that you have to these particular issues. And so what I'm talking about here in the context of this conversation is the irresponsibility of this council to neglect the future, because the policy decisions that you're making now are going to impact the context in which I live and I exist. And hundreds of thousands of my ancestors, I mean, of my elders and my people are going to have to contend with. And so it's irresponsible to come to these meetings and not have a cost analysis with respect to the racial equity principles that you have, because you don't even have a racial equity law legally binding definition. What you have is a mission statement from a frickin'.
Back to council.
No, I'm going to have to ask for help again. I'm having a hard time getting my Zoom up. Do we have any hands on Zoom?
No hands right now.
Okay. Councilmember Ross.
Yeah, obviously really good news. I think one thing that I recognize, we had this conversation as we entered this new field and the PCIA charges just went through the roof, and there was a lot of concern, I think, on, hey, you know, did we make the right decision? What's this going to look like? And I think we knew we were in it for the long run, albeit, as you described, unprecedented on the drop in the PCIA charge. But I think it just proved that, hey, that we are in this for the long run and already, right, we're seeing that turnaround, and now we're going to be able to build those reserves. Could you speak a little bit, though? You said it was unprecedented, going down, projected to go down almost to zero. How is that? I mean, from what we saw to what we're seeing now?
Councilmember, thank you. It's a very good question. The reason for that, the reason for the rise and now the fall is actually the same reason. In 2018, the Public Utilities Commission changed the way they calculated the PCIA, and they now calculate the PCIA, the primary driver is short-term power prices. And so they have an inverse relationship. When power prices are lower, the PCIA is higher. And then when power prices are higher, the PCIA is lower. And you can think of that, you know, what the PCIA is meant to collect for is PG&E's above-market costs. So they had resources before CCAs existed, and in a perfect world, they'd be able to sell off those resources at the market costs and recover, and there wouldn't be any above-market costs. You know, when we launched, power prices were much lower than they are today, really starting in the late summer of 2020. Power markets started to increase after that heat storm that we experienced in 2020. And then in 2021, there was a Texas freeze, another pretty extreme weather event that also pushed prices up higher. The drought has also been a factor. There hasn't been as much hydro available, so just limited supply. And then finally, this year, the war in Ukraine has really increased gas prices globally, which has increased power markets. And then finally, we had another extreme summer and heat event, you know, over Labor Day weekend. And so prices are very high, and that means, you know, there just aren't as much cost to recover in the PCI for those above-market costs. You know, you wouldn't have expected prices to rise this quickly. That's why I say it's unprecedented. And that's why our recommendation is really to build that operating reserve, because as long as the PCIA is calculated on these short-term prices, it's really important that we have a reserve to stabilize rates and then also work toward the long term, toward solutions that, you know, ultimately reduce costs for all ratepayers and really lower and stabilize the PCI fee so that, you know, it's not going up and down so dramatically each year.
Okay. Thank you. I appreciate that. And thanks for the presentation. I'll move approval.
Second.
All right. Motion second. I just wanted to say thanks again, Lori, to all the work that your team's done. Three really big pieces of good news, often overlooked, is the fact that the cares discount is now 10% instead of 5. I think it's wonderful. What we just talked about, be able to build the reserves as you have, hopefully in a year if all goes well, that would be tremendous, because when that reserve is built, then you and your team and the council can really start to engage with the community about how we can creatively invest in ways in achieving our objectives around equity and sustainability and everything else. And then, of course, the rates, be able to keep them low and under PG&Es. I think this is really a fantastic bit of news. So thank you. Any other questions from the council? Okay, let's vote.
Jimenez. Parales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis. Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas. Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Item 8.1, actions related to the San Jose Hotel Business Improvement District for the next fiscal year.
I'll move approval.
Now, this is a public hearing.
Second.
And a motion. Okay. So we're going to do both. So we'll take that motion. We're going to ask if anyone in the public would like to speak at this public hearing on the Hotel Business Improvement District.
Paul Soto.
Yeah, Paul Soto from the horseshoe. Yeah, I'd like to talk about it, because that was the origin point for the raising the flag statue. It's not the Fallon statue. It's called raising the flag.
Paul, we're on the Hotel Business Improvement District.
Quit interrupting me, Mayor. I'm talking. So with redevelopment with respect to hotels, there's a history of the corruption in that system. And I would like that, that ability for hijacking these policy decisions in order to institute racist policies with respect to that statue, because you can't separate the Fairmont Hotel from the raising the flag statue. You can't separate the two, because one evolved from the other. And that right there is now going to cost the city a few hundred thousand dollars to remove and public embarrassment, because it's going to make national news. So I have every single right to talk about hotel development and the city's involvement in it, because that city involvement is what placed that statue there. So once again, quit interrupting me, Mayor. I'm talking. I know what I'm talking about.
Are you going to talk about the Hotel Business Improvement District?
Yeah, I'm talking about it. I'm talking about.
All right, we look forward to hearing those comments.
And the corruption with it, because I'm tired of having to undo the next generation, because there's going to be a Paul Soto in the next generation. And so I'm trying to prevent as much work, like the work that he has to do, to amend the corruption that's going to happen right now, as soon as I'm finished talking. So that's, that's the issue that I have, is that the corruption that happens right now, it took 36 years, but I did it. I did it. And there's more that I'm going to do. Make no mistake. But the corruption with the relationship between the, between the city and the hotel businesses, it needs to stop. It just needs.
Catherine Hedges.
I'm really unhappy about how disrespectfully the last speaker is treated by the mayor. That's not how these meetings are supposed to go. Goodbye.
We'll entertain a motion now on the Hotel Business Improvement District. Or any questions? Oh, I'm sorry, there was a motion already from Councilmember Ross. Are there any questions? Let's vote.
Jimenez. Parales.
Yes.
Cohen.
Aye.
Carrasco.
Aye.
Davis. Sparza.
Yes.
Arenas.
Yes.
Foley.
Aye.
Mahan.
Aye.
Jones.
Aye.
Liccardo.
Aye.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be in recess then until 6:00 PM. And I believe we, okay, I just want to confirm. Okay. All right, let's recess. We'll see you all at 6:00. Thanks.